All right, let's call to order the regular council meeting here on Monday, November 7. It is actually 6:43 PM, so we're picking this up following the public hearing of objections. We are at the W C O'Neil Arena Complex at 24 Reed Avenue. And people can also view us through Zoom and Facebook and obviously later with our friends at C H O Television. If anyone this evening has any questions, in addition to being available on Zoom and in person, they can email P Knopper at townofstandards.ca and he'll scan to see if anyone emailed us throughout the course of the meeting. It is important to note that questions will only be answered pertaining to this agenda for this evening. Let's get into the recording of attendance. I see that all members of council are in attendance for this meeting as well, so thank you very much, council. And I want to recognize that we are on the unceded traditional territory of the Besko Tomugati people. Are you looking for a mover to approve this agenda, circulate it? I've got two, I've got councillor Heenan and seconded by councillor Hurdle. Any changes to the agenda this evening? There is some friendly amendments inside of it when it comes to committees and things like that, but we can address it at that time. So if there's no amendments, I'll call the question. All in favor of approving this agenda, please signify by saying aye. That is everybody, so that has been carried. We are into disclosure of conflict of interest. Is there any this evening? Myself, I'll be declaring one as it pertains to Compass Housing. There will be a presentation as well as there is a specific motion later on, or at least a discussion, so I'll recuse myself as that is adjacent to family members of mine property and it is impacting unfortunately some of my personal life. So at this particular time, if there's no other conflict of interest, I will get into presentations. The first one will be by John Rocke. I see him in attendance, so thank you very much, Mr. Rocke, for being here. This is for Bridle Path International. It's a presentation on 256 and 260 Water Street with some updated information for council.
Good evening, your worship and council. I promise to be very brief. I know you're very tired of seeing me and everybody else and that you're ready to move on to other business. You're now in possession of our latest plans and rendering of the Princess Royal Elevation, showing our new balcony concept, as well as the copy of the geotechnical report that highlights the challenges of developing the parking garage, challenges that we believe are manageable even though more expensive to build than we had hoped. What I'd like to do is summarize what those for and against have been asking you. And let me offer you and the neighbors what I believe is a win-win option. Simply stated, we have a difference of opinion on what's required to develop a successful project on this project. We believe an amendment is needed to the secondary municipal plan for any project on this site to be economically viable. The neighbors and their supporters disagree, and they insist that any project on this site must fully comport with the secondary municipal plan. No variances, no amendments. That's what they believe. This is a stunning turnaround from just two months ago when Mr. Grinaway and 22 neighbors told you in their first letter that they were prepared to support our height request subject to conditions so long as we in the town fully engaged them in the design and construction and development process. Not only did their position harden, rejected meetings with us not once, not twice, but three times, but their tone also changed and hardened. And some accuse you and staff of bias and others threaten legal action. So let's disregard the passion for a moment and ask the central question. Are they right? Do the facts support their claim that you can successfully build a project without any variances? Mr. Holmes and Mr. Stanley could make a go of their project in 2017 even with a lot of variances and the blessing of historically low interest rates and normal construction costs. In the intervening five years, the land has set vacant. No other developer has stepped up and said to you, yes, we can do it, we will do it. Nor have the neighbors engaged Mr. Holmes to come up with a win-win solution. And as I stand before you, even I can't promise you yet that our project is economically viable even with all the variances and double the density because of the escalating construction costs and interest rates environment. Given these facts, I suggest to you, your worship and councillors, that the burden of proof is on our neighbors and their supporters to prove that what they're saying to you is right. They have planners, architects, and other professionals on their team and the financial resources to present you with a design of an economically successful project that meets their criteria. They can't continue to ask you year after year that you rely solely on faith that someday some developer will come along and build the project they want to see. Maybe you could consider more time. If Mr. Holmes was the only one impacted, unfortunately, the wider community of St. Andrews is also impacted. And they're asking you, to make, your worship and councils, to make significant sacrifices for their benefit. They want you to say no to the housing the community needs and wants. They want you to say no to Ms. Dolma French, who wants to come back home to St. Andrews after she was forced to leave because she couldn't find accessible home or apartments here. They want you to say no to Mr. and Mrs. McGuire-Monton, who wrote you and who want to move to St. Andrews but also can't find an accessible apartment. And they want you to say no to others in your community who will undoubtedly need accessible housing in the future. And finally, they want you to say no to Mr. Holmes' right to sell his property at its fair market value without compensating him for the lost value. Surely, the community is entitled to more from them. So let me propose a win-win option to you and to them. Pass the amendment and we'll agree to assign our option to the land to the neighbors so that they can build a project that respects all the guidelines of the secondary municipal plan that they believe can happen. If they do it, it's a win-win for them, the community, and Mr. Holmes. If they don't do it, then we will not be delayed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rocke. This is for council. Any questions for Mr. Rocke on anything he said this evening? Okay, doing one more call. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Rocke, I appreciate that. The next presentation, if you give me a minute just to recuse myself, I'll pass it over to you, Deputy Mayor Akeji, just to chair it. And if someone would be kind enough to let me know, I'll be once again hiding in the washroom.
Deputy Mayor, please use your microphone. Thank you.
The second presentation is with Tressa Bevington and Compass Housing, Inc., the site plan presentation for 302 Moat Drive. Ms. Bevington, it's your turn.
Ms. Bevington, can you hear us?
Your mic is not on or we can't hear you. Technical difficulties. Can she hear us? Oh, there she is. We can't hear you.
Still can't hear you.
No sound.
Xander, can you unmute yourself just to see if it's her feed or our feed?
Xander, can you?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
We're good, thank you.
Thank you. He's not muted.
Check your microphone setting on your Zoom, Tressa.
If she calls, I can take that through that Zoom. Yes.
She's got a reboot. I think that's what she said, if I was lip reading right. I hope the mayor's listening to music. Shall we? Oh. Just trying again. I got two dresses.
There she is.
Yep. No sound yet, sorry. No sound.
Still no audio.
No audio. So I have a whole row of dresses.
Don't you think they're planned? Very colorful.
It was very, yeah, very, very colorful. Okay.
I can go.
Okay. We could do the minutes while we're waiting. Could approve the minutes if that's okay with council?
Absolutely.
They're all sleeping on that side. So we could approve the minutes of the past-minute meetings until Tressa is ready to come on
All right, so we'll come back to that, is my understanding. So let's get into the approval of the minutes from the previous meetings. Before I get into them, I always check, is there any changes? Otherwise, I'll speed through them. Not seeing any, they're usually, yep.
I have just a note here, I read through them, and I would like to congratulate Paul in doing a wonderful job at capturing the comments.
Perfect.
Of the citizens of St. Andrews.
In particular, the hearing of objections.
Yes.
There was lengthy conversation there.
So I would like to congratulate him. Thank you, worship.
Yeah, he does a great job, thank you, councillor Heenan. They're fun stuff to do, too, I'm sure. All right, let's get into the approval of the minutes. The first one are the minutes of the 221003 regular meeting of council on Monday, October 3, 2022, at 6:30 PM. Could I have a mover to approve these minutes? Councillor Heenan, seconded by, I'm looking to my right, councillor Neil. Any discussion on these? Okay, call the question. All in favor of approving those minutes, please signify by saying aye. That is everybody, those have been approved. The next one are the minutes of the public hearing of objections to 302 Moat Drive on Monday, October 17, 2022, at 6:30 PM. Could I have a mover for that one? Councillor Hurdle. Councillor Blanchard, seconded. All in favor of approving these minutes, please signify by saying aye. That's everybody, those have been approved. Next one are the minutes of the 221017 public hearing of objections to 256260 Water Street on Monday, October 17, 2022, at 6:48 PM. Could I have a mover? I've got councillor Heenan and seconded by councillor Neil. All in favor of approving these minutes, please signify by saying aye. That's everybody, those have been approved. Then we're on to the minutes of the 221017 regular council meeting on Monday, October 17, 2022, at 8:03 PM. Could I have a mover for those? Councillor Hurdle, I'm moving it around tonight, seconded by councillor Blanchard. All in favor of these minutes, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That's everybody, those have been carried. And the last one are the minutes of the 221017 regular council meeting on Monday, October 17, 2022. Oh, that's the same one. That's on the next page, we've done that. So we are into communication, sorry about that. And I'm not going to read the whole letter just because it's in the motion, so I'll be looking for some consensus. Let me just jump ahead to the actual proclamation. We've got a request from the Crohn's and Colitis Association for, Crohn's and Colitis of Canada, to make a proclamation for the month of November. Be looking for some consensus, if you'd like me to go ahead with this proclamation. Does that make sense to you, Mr. Spear? Okay, all in favor of me going ahead with this proclamation, just signify by saying aye. That is everybody, so I will read it. So this is the Town of St. Andrews proclamation for Crohn's and Colitis Awareness Month of November 2022. Whereas Crohn's and Colitis Canada is a national volunteer-based nonprofit organization supporting the over 270,000 Canadians living with inflammatory bowel disease, otherwise known as IBD, a chronic autoimmune disease that causes the body to attach healthy tissue leading to inflammation of part of or all of the digestive system. And whereas people living with IBD routinely endure abdominal pain, cramping, fatigue, internal bleeding, and frequent and urgent bowel movements, in some cases over 20 times a day. While more than 5 million people globally live with IBD, Canada has one of the highest prevalence rates in the world, with the Atlantic provinces having the highest rates in the country. By 2030, experts predict the number of Canadians living with IBD to exceed 400,000, that is 1% of the population. Currently, there is no cure. And whereas every November, Canada celebrates Crohn's and Colitis Awareness Month as part of this initiative landmarks across Canada illuminated red and the show of support for everyone impacted by IBD. And whereas to learn more about Crohn's and Colitis Canada and the work this organization does, please visit crohnsandcolitis.ca. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Town of St. Andrews hereby proclaims November 2022 as Crohn's and Colitis Awareness Month. And now, therefore, I, Brad Henderson, Mayor of the Town of St. Andrews, support the proclamation of Crohn's and Colitis Awareness Month for the Town of St. Andrews, signed on November 7, 2022. And the witness whereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of merrility for the Town of St. Andrews to be affixed here, too. Thank you very much, council. Do you need, are you good to go, or do you want me to keep going? Okay.
Ms. Bevington, can you unmute yourself so we can hear you?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you. Just hold on one second.
You just give me a moment to recuse myself, I'll pass it back to the deputy mayor, and then we'll pick it back up at staff reports after. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Sorry about that, everyone.
That's okay.
Making Brad walk around tonight, it's good for him.
Okay, Ms. Bevington, we're ready for you.
Okay, thank you so much, and thank you for your patience tonight. Paul's just bringing up the renderings that we submitted to him of our new project that we wanted to share with you today. So I'm very excited to show you our first renderings. I know that we discussed this last meeting, we provided you our site plan. The next step in our planning process where we're able to provide the renderings for council to consider, just to get an idea of the land, as we work on this sustainable development. As you know, there used to be a motel on site, and now we're repurposing this land for some really nice apartments for some, hopefully, new faces around St. Andrews and if anyone is existing that needs to live here. So this 42-year-old apartment building, as you'll see here, known as the Compass. This is, this first slide that you're looking at is actually a street view from Moat Drive. I thought that was really important to give council an idea of what it would look like from the road as you're driving. I just want it noted that this is our somewhat preliminary design. We're not stuck on these colors yet, but I wanted to give council something, I didn't want to delay it. I wanted to give council something to look at at your meeting and so that you're able to get an idea of what you're looking at from Moat Drive. So Paul, if you could go to the next slide, please? And this is just looking the other way, this would be as you're coming into town, what it would look like. We are trying to keep as much greenery around the building as possible. The bushes are looking pretty rough right now, but we would hope to clean those up as well as keep the trees that are at the property because I think it adds a lot to the people living there and also the people driving by. So this is to give you an idea of what it looks like as you're driving into town from Moat Drive. Paul, if you could turn the next one? And this is just a side view of the end of the building to give you also another idea. You can see on the ends are the two bedrooms with the decks. And Paul, just the next slide. And this would be the front entrance of the building that would be facing away from Moat Drive. So this entrance would be essentially facing the property where Inkers Landing is located. And the next slide, please? And another view from the corner of the property, looking at the front door, just to give you an idea of the layout of the building and what it's to look like when you're driving in. And the next slide, please, Paul? Just another shot of the front door. I know I have a lot of kind of the same, but I just wanted to add as much in here to give you an idea. The next slide, please? And this is more of an aerial shot of what it would look like to show you kind of the size of the building that we're proposing that is on the site plan that we submitted before. This is no different than what we have presented to you, but just to give you an idea of the size of the building from an aerial shot. So I hope that everyone's excited, as excited as we are about this potential project. We are really excited to submit the renderings to the town, and we're still working on the design of the interior of the building. I'd be happy to present to council as we move along with the project, once we get our apartment layouts and once we get the layout inside, I would be more than happy to do another presentation to council to keep you updated on what is going on inside the building because it's going to be just as nice as the outside of the building. So I hope that that gives you a better idea of what we're planning for on-site, what it will look like going into town. I think it's going to be a really beautiful addition to our community, and I think it's, as you know, much needed, and I think it's the best use of this land coming into town. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has about what you've just seen.
All right, council, do you have any questions for Ms. Bevington? Councillor Michelle?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Ms. Bevington, I was running by there most every day and keep noticing the two entrances. And I know, and this came up last time, and I'm just not certain that having one entrance wouldn't lead to more congestion, and since there's already two existing entrances to that property historically, just wondering if having two entrances moving forward wouldn't leave more space for, you know, road hockey or shooting basketballs in the backyard on the pavement? Just a question and a comment. Thank you.
One thing that we do have on the other end of the building, though, even though there's not an exit, there will be a big parcel of pavement there because we'll have a turnaround at that place. So there will be some room back there, it just won't connect to Moat Drive, but there will be a good space back there for movement and for cars to get around and stuff back there.
I guess my question would just be the rationale behind that. I mean, we have, we work with CBCL extensively, and they have road traffic engineers, and just wondering why we wouldn't have two entrances when there are already two entrances? Just, I mean, it's a suggestion, maybe someone can tell me why it would be better with just one. But thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the comment. I think the reasoning and the rationale behind having one driveway is that we didn't want it to be like a drive-through for people, so if they're coming in and looking at the building or driving through quickly, like that was my concern of potentially families and young children living there. I just thought it might control the traffic better, and obviously, our engineers made the site design, and so that was our rationale behind it, just to slow down traffic going through there and to control it more that way. But it's a good suggestion, but that was our rationale behind it.
Thank you, Ms. Bevington. Any other council that would like to chat on this, ask questions? Councillor Blanchard?
Just a quick question. You mentioned the interior drawings, Ms. Bevington. Do you have a timeline in terms of completion of those when we could have the opportunity to see the inside design?
I don't have a timeline right now. As soon as possible, and this was the first step to get the design team to work on that. So as I said, as soon as I have them, I'd be more than happy to share with council and get any input that you guys have on any of the interior, like if you have suggestions or you might have an eye for something that we missed, I'd be more than happy to share with you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bevington. Councillor Hurdle?
Thank you very much. Just a quick question for Ms. Bevington, this could be getting way into the weeds really, really quickly, but just I happened to notice in the renderings that the siding, the vinyl siding is vertical. Is that just an aesthetic choice? And have you looked at it looking horizontal as well and just chosen one over the other?
Yeah, it was just our design team that came up with the vertical. So like I said, it will probably be close to that, but it's just something that they're doing with other buildings, so that's why they added it there just for a different feature of the building, to make it break up the sightlines.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Bevington. Anybody else? Anybody, anything else, councillor? Okay, so now we'll go to the audience. Any questions for Ms. Bevington or any suggestions?
Deputy Mayor, point of order, question period is at the end. This is strictly for council.
Pardon me.
And I'll be here at the end.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bevington. I'm sorry, that was me.
That was my fault.
He was poking me, and I thought it was later, but thank you very much for giving us this preview of what it looks like and that we will look forward to seeing the interior and for questions at the end. Thank you very much, and thank you for sticking around.
Thank you for your patience.
You're welcome. Now, somebody get the mayor.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. All right, let's get right into H, which is staff reports and financial reports at this point. I will pass it over to our CAO, Mr. Chris Spear, the floor is yours.
Thank you, worship, council. As we are just a few days before Remembrance Day, I wish to acknowledge the sacrifice of past and current Canadian services personnel and their families who support our democracy through their sense of duty and commitment to Canada. Council, one of the initiatives undertaken over the past decade, mostly by the Kiwanis Club of St. Andrews and the St. Andrews Outdoor Recreation Trails, Inc., is the development and growth of the Van Horn Trail System. In our local region, there have been multiple stakeholders participating in the creation and expansion of trail networks. To work collaboratively, we are recommending that a trail advisory committee be established to unite the groups and become better coordinated on all of our individual trail efforts. Terms of reference and the first appointments to the committee are before council tonight for your consideration. We have three planning files within our current and future agendas. I wanted to provide a brief synopsis of where we are with each of these files. So Bridle Path at 256260 Water Street. The secondary municipal plan amendment, MP 200201, has passed the second reading and has included two public hearings of objections. Council continues to review the plan for development before considering third reading. If it passes third reading, a development scheme bylaw with public consultation as stipulated under the Community Planning Act will be stipulated under the Community Planning Act will be required before construction would be authorized. Compass Housing, which we heard a little bit earlier, uh, the property has gone through first reading only of the municipal plan and zoning bylaws, Z twenty-two oh one amendments. We are seeking further information from the proponent before creating a development agreement that will put terms and conditions on the project if council continues to support this initiative. And Mary Trumner, Mrs. Trumner is looking for a secondary municipal plan amendment, M twenty oh two oh two, to build an undersized Cape Cod style home on the property on Carlton Street to be able to maintain most of the current trees. Due to the large size of the neighbors' property and homes, the proposed house appears small following the average home footprint along the block, but a proposed building will be close to twenty-four hundred square feet over two stories. Van Horn Garden Homes have received all their needed permissions from council and are now under the direction of the developer, service commission and staff to stay true to the development agreement and building codes. Council is reviewing the advantage of a heritage bylaw to the town. The secondary municipal plan was put in place a couple of years ago to help strengthen our commitment to heritage preservation, but it has its limitations as a tool and has become more obvious over time. On tonight's agenda is a discussion to set up a heritage board who through community consultation will provide recommendations if a heritage bylaw is warranted and what it should encompass. Authorized by the New Brunswick Heritage Conservation Act, the process of setting up the bylaw is highly regulated and aims to have a fair representation of multiple stakeholders in the process. Also within the agenda tonight are discussions related to the Environmental Trust Fund and potential projects for consideration. Established in nineteen ninety, the fund supports projects focused on protecting, preserving and enhancing the province's natural environments by offering full funding for studies that aim to achieve these goals. In the past, the town has utilized the funds on climate change, Shamquook Lake studies and on GHG admission studies, just to name a few. While the funds do not support capital projects, the data is used to make future plans and provide the town with information about where resources should be allocated. Under administration, senior staff will be preparing a council orientation session for the three new counselors joining us in the new year. As we transition into this new period, we look forward to more ideas around the table and how we advance our sense of community. Although there's a bit of uncertainty related to the town's role in these new wards, one of the goals of the reform is to give those residents in outlying areas a voice regarding the services they use. As Mayor Henderson has made known, the two thousand and twenty-three budgets are mostly out of the hands of council this year. Town staff have worked with council to identify priorities and recommendations to the facilitator and eventually the Minister of Local Governance Reform. Capital budgets will be approved in the future after the operation budgets are official. Staff will be conducting a review of the vehicular bylaw over the fall and winter, which will include input. The review has been under consideration for a bit, but with increased traffic, changes in traffic patterns and overall safety concerns, we feel it is time to do a holistic review of it. We have saved the correspondence from the public that have come in over the years to follow through unknown areas of concern. The Wharf project is stalled because of funding challenges. We have met with the funding partners and they have provided options to consider regarding the excess funds needed. Staff is requesting a meeting with council to review these options to determine how we proceed. Council had an opportunity earlier this fall to meet with the design team to get a better sense of the challenges and timelines needed to complete this undertaking. Over the next few days, you may hear or see equipment on the lower corner of Champlain Avenue and Byer Road. A team was conducting or is conducting a geotactical survey of specific areas of the property to determine the suitability for development. As the Board of Past Macquarie Lodge continues to review options for a new facility, they need information to move the design along to a more accurate construction budget. The area is centered by our leaf composting area, so there was minimal loss of trees to dig the small pits. I also like to acknowledge the retirement of Glenn Porter, our CBCL account manager and advocate for the town. Over the past thirteen years, he has been involved in town infrastructure projects and has provided great advice, timely information and quality management project, or project management. Many council members and citizens would have interacted with Glenn over the years and appreciate the customer service he brought with these projects and his attention to quality. The clerk has applied for and received several grants this year for the town, including four hundred thousand dollars to do phase two of Market Square and an energy efficiency grant for twenty thousand dollars. Both will be discussed with council over the next few weeks. The operations manager has been occupied with, among other things, inspecting the trail expansion on behalf of the town, cooperating with developers and contractors to identify infrastructure services that, that can be connected to and overseeing further rehabilitation of the ice plant at the arena and ice installation earlier this month. It should be noted that when new additions of construction comes up, in addition to the Regional Service Commission spending time with the project, staff, excuse me, staff, town staff reviews the proposals, provides input, recommendations and to determine how, if it will affect local services. Development is an in-depth team effort and requires multiple reviews for construction that meets all the municipal plan and zoning standards. Until the end of October, the planning office has issued six point seven million dollars worth of permits this year, up twenty percent over last year. Within the water department, we have sent one of our technicians to Halifax for a week as he works towards his level two water and wastewater operator certificates. These courses used to be routinely offered by Pedal through the New Brunswick Community College in the province, but there's not been a course since pre-pandemic. These courses are a necessary part of our approvals and requires us to go to uh, the closest opportunity. I also wish to thank our fire department for their response to the oceanfront campground that consumed the Kiwanis Recreation Hall. Due to the location of propane tanks, it was a higher risk situation than originally thought. Thankfully, the volunteers put in hours of training annually to prepare for these types of incidents. They are able to fight the fire with no injuries and maintain the damage to the one building. And believe it or not, in conclusion, I'm happy to see Christmas events coming together to both entertain residents and attract visitors to St. Andrews over the month of December's. Thank you to all the volunteers who are making this possible. I am confident you will be in the Christmas spirit all month long. Respectfully, Chris Spear, CAO treasure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Spear. Appreciate that update. Uh, any questions by any member of council related to the staff reports? Okay, seeing none. Um, so I guess just a quick one is I know we did a pilot project this year with the four-day work week, which is kind of a hot topic item across, uh, I guess you could say almost across the world, but definitely in Canada. I was wondering as summer winds down, not that it ever shuts down completely for town hall, but uh, just a couple of quick thoughts on how that went overall for council?
Um, from staff's perspective, especially during the summer, they really liked it. We suspended it back in uh, September, early October, um, primarily to give everyone uh, on schedules, but the loss of daylight in the early morning hours and later in the days, it didn't make it as feasible because, you know, they didn't want to start work in the dark. Other communities that are doing this, and the only one that I've, I saw is that ChrisPam Six actually is allowing their town hall staff to elect to do that. Uh, most places are just doing the summertime uh, model and hoping to bring that up to the council next year for the same thing, as certainly for staff having the three-day work weeks, or sorry, the three-day uh, weekends was really appreciated and certainly we worked our full contingent of hours in the first four days of the week, but it gave us some opportunities to do things through the summer when the good weather was here.
Perfect. And you felt that productivity was at par and as well, was there any reduction in like sick days or anything, any measurable, I guess?
I would say that uh, sick days were down a bit and, and, or personal days because people could make appointments that they couldn't make, you know, because of the weekends and so doctors' appointments and things like that were achievable and then people just timed those things on their off days to make it all happen.
Perfect. And just last question, uh, financial report, is there anything you want to highlight? I know you've highlighted that uh, the council won't be having the regular budget meetings that we've seen, at least I've experienced over the last five years, but is there anything you want to highlight for the budget year to date?
I don't think so, your worship. I will say that staff will be working on a projected budget to the year end this month and so uh, by the first meeting in December, you'll see how we go for the, we'll look for the year. And uh, we're still a little concerned, have cut some projects because of uh, the snow budget was beat all the pieces and inflation and the gas was beaten over this year, but we don't have any concerns right now that we're going to be over budget.
Perfect. Well, based on hornets' nests in the community and bees' nests, you might have to up the, the snow budget again this year, if that's any indication. Thank you for that. Um, I'll look for a mover to accept the staff report as presented. I've got Counselor Heenan and seconded by Counselor Hurdle, um, all in favor of approving this, this staff report. Please signify by saying aye. Those have been accepted. We are now moving into the introduction consideration of passing of bylaws. Looks like we've got a little bit for everyone for the first time in a while, so we'll kick it off as always with Deputy Mayor Akaji.
Thank you, your worship and council. Um, my first one is FA two-two-one-one-zero-nine. And it's the Community Assistance Grant Request for Support for the Winter Warmer Festival in January of twenty twenty-three. So the background is this, on Friday, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, the town of St. Andrews received a request from Mr. Jamie Steele, the festival organizer for the Winter Warmer Festival in St. Andrews for January twenty twenty-three. They are requesting five hundred dollars in support of the festival through the Community Assistance Grant Program. Please see the attached document for the grant application for the background information and request for funds, council. There is four thousand six hundred dollars remaining in our Community Assistance Grant budget for twenty twenty-two. If council supports this grant application, the remaining funds would be four thousand one hundred dollars. So the motion is this, council, that council supports the Community Assistant Grant Application Request of five hundred dollars by Mr. Jamie Steele, festival organizer, organizer for the Winter Warmer Festival in St. Andrews in January of twenty twenty-three, and I so move, your worship.
Could I please have a secondor for that? I bet Counselor Lumichelle, um, and we'll open this one up for discussion. Any debater, clarifying questions?
Be a nice tone.
Seeing none, so I will call the question. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's everybody. That one has been approved. We're on to the next one.
FA two-two-one-one-one-two. And it's the resignation of William Kernohan, ma, manager of recreation for the town of St. Andrews. And the background is this, on Wednesday, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, the town of St. Andrews received a resignation letter from Mr. William Kernohan regarding his position as manager of recreation. As council appointed Mr. Kernohan into the position, council must move to accept his resignation. Town staff will be reviewing options for the next steps for the manager of recreation position for the town of St. Andrews. And the act, and the motion is this, council, that the council of the town of St. Andrews accept the resignation of Mr. William Kernohan as the manager of recreation for the town of St. Andrews, and I so move, your worship.
Thank you again, Deputy Mayor. I've got a quick hand from Counselor Heenan seconding that. Um, okay, and we'll open this one up for discussion. Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor of approving this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Once again, that is six uh, in favor, so that has carried. And your last one, I believe.
And my last one is. FA two-two-one-one-one-three. And it's Community Assistance Grant Application by Chris, for Christmas, by Christmas, by the sea. On, and the background is this, on November second, twenty twenty-two, the town of St. Andrews received a request for a Community Assistance Grant from Christmas by the Sea. The committee is made up of businesses, the Chamber, BIA, and the town, which are planning multiple events across three weeks in December. The goal is to bring together locals and attract visitors to the local businesses of the town of St. Andrews. Events include the Christmas parade, music shopping events, the European-style market and more. To widen the advertising area and provide a wider assortment of events, Christmas by the Sea is requesting one thousand dollars in support from the town. Funding is also to be sought for, sought from Explore St. Andrews, however, the Community Assistance Grant funding would ensure successful community events. Note that the Community Assistance Grant currently has four thousand six hundred dollars remaining. There is an additional request for an event in January of twenty twenty-three for five hundred dollars. If this grant is approved and the additional request is approved, the funds remaining would be three thousand one hundred dollars. So the motion is this, that the council of the town of St. Andrews supports the Community Assistant Grant Request of one thousand dollars for, from Christmas by the Sea to support events for December twenty twenty-two, and I so move, your worship.
Perfect. Nice, your years of teaching caught the January two thousand twenty-two on the fly. Good work. Uh, secondor for that motion? Counselor Blanchard? I'm favoring the right tonight, did you guys notice that?
I know.
Yeah, it's good to mix it up.
We're feeling shysted.
Discussion on this motion?
It's a great event, I think.
It is and it, it is for tourists, but it's definitely for locals as well. Counselor Hurdle?
Um, just to raise a question, this seems to be the sort of thing that tourist accommodation levy might be used for? Is that still on the table in terms?
It is. I don't know what they have left for funds this year, but I will say for this one, I believe it's probably just as relevant for locals, like a lot of the events is, not that tourists don't benefit, but like the skate with Santa is usually people from town, all that stuff. So this one feels a little different, but if you feel different, then by all means. Um, but yeah, it's a good, it's a good question because you, you don't want to set precedence and next year you get grant requests when we clearly allocate it funds to consider events, right? So it's a fair, it's a fair point. Any other, Counselor Neal?
Yes, thank you. Um, just a question, I don't know if staff has the answer or not, but I was just wondering if there was any indication as to the overall cost associated with the events?
To be determined. It's kind of a combination of the more money they're getting. The chair's saying five thousand dollars, but I know they're still adding events, so if they got funding, they were adding events to enhance it.
Yeah, I think they're looking, I did attend to me, I believe Paul or Chris or both of you attended, Chris did. I know that they're trying to do things like, like maybe a horse, like a horse ride, like carriage around the town. They're like, they're working on some new events as well. They, I think the Chamber got a large grant last year, I want to say of twenty or twenty-five thousand. I don't think they got it this year. No, so they, they don't have the access to funds that they did last year. Any other questions or comments?
Your worship, just one little.
Absolutely.
Sorry, I don't, cause two, is because it's combining with Sparkle by the Sea this year, which is aimed more at the visitor's side as well and some of it was to try to encourage some more advertising, some um, dedicated advertising to some of the requests to try to bring more people to the town along those weekends.
Perfect, thank you. This would be my shameless plug to encourage more organizations and business to enter a float into the parade, a four or five float parade isn't much to bundle your kids up to go see, so if you're in an organization, I know in July it's tough, you're busy, but it's a time of year and that is my shameless plug in it. Um, all right, we'll call the question. All in favor of approving this motion?
Aye.
And that's everybody, so that has been approved. Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Akaji. And at this point, we're going to switch to Public Works with Counselor Blanchard.
Thanks, your worship. Uh, so reference number PW two-two-one-one-one-two. Subject is the Environmental Trust Fund, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Uh, the Environmental Trust Fund for the province of New Brunswick is now open for application until November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. The fund supports projects focused on protecting, preserving and enhancing the province's natural environment. Priority areas and measurements that the province will be looking at include protecting our environment, conservation protection, or conservation projects or research focused on water, air, coastlines and wetlands, increasing environmental awareness, projects delivering educational environmental information through schools, youth-based organizations and community groups, et cetera, managing waste, activities supporting waste reduction and management activities, i.e. glass and other recycling programs, discouraging illegal dumping and community cleanup projects. Also, climate change, uh, projects and initiatives in response to climate change and its impacts such as community-based transportation, carbon offset opportunities, uh, renewable energy, et cetera. And the fifth, uh, building sustainable communities, uh, new land use and climate change initiatives to create greener communities and regions. So in discussions with the Environmental Advisory Committee, they are recommending the following projects be options for consideration. The first would be a compost feasibility study. The second would be an urban forestry strategy. And the third, um, alternative freshwater sources slash opportunities for St. Andrews. And it is recommended that council provide a motion of support for, for the application to the Environmental Trust Fund to show support for the applications. And the motion that would be before council is that the council of the town of St. Andrews supports the following Environmental Trust Fund, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three applications, and I so move.
Perfect. So we'll have to fill in the blanks, the friendly amendment, would you consider that friendly? You consider that friendly since it's a blank, right? Okay, so let's have some discussion, I guess, before we move and second it, because we should just add in what it specifically is, if that makes sense to you, Counselor Blanchard.
Yep.
Not to put you on the spot, but I don't know if you wanted to speak first, since you are on the Environmental Committee, if there's particular thoughts you have on these three projects or any others, or anything you want to share with Counsel? And then I'll also give Mr. Nauper a chance to speak, because I believe he's on the committee as well.
He is, yeah. Maybe between the both of us, we could, we could sort of tag team on that. I unfortunately was not able to attend the last meeting of the Environmental Advisory Committee, but we've had, we have had these conversations on, on these topics for quite some time. It's just a matter of sort of bringing it all together over the last meeting or two. Certainly, the compost feasibility study is something that we looked at in the past. We had previously applied for a grant looking at more individualized, almost like a desktop, sort of a composter, which would be for individual households. We were unsuccessful in that, in that grant, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. So I, I think now with the amalgamation of the, the regions municipalities and some of the changes that are going to be occurring at the regional service level, including waste, waste pickup, the possibility there, I guess we're sort of thinking there might be an option for some, some kind of a regional compost study perhaps, and I think that's where that sort of, that fell. The urban, urban forestry strategy came about after, well, we've had a number of letters over the last year or two with regards to certain developments and trees, mature trees, green spaces, things of that nature, being cut down for, for the sake of development, where we don't have anything in place necessarily, any, any sort of guidelines. This has been discussed on a number of occasions. We thought it might make sense for our community to have an urban forestry strategy to sort of deal with and sort of guide the, the town when it comes to those, those discussions. And I think the alternative freshwater opportunities sort of came about through the discussions about the possible development of Cook's aquaculture down and around, down and around Shamcook Lake, the drilling of some of the test wells and wells for a new post-smolt facility, I think was what it was there. And, and again, the concerns by, by citizens here in St. Andrews, where, where Shamcook Lake is, of course, our drinking water supply. So, so just looking at some options there, and again, some discussions. I don't know, Paul, if you had anything you'd like to perhaps add to that, Your Mayor, if that's okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Through, Your Worship, just on the water aspect of Shamcook Lake, there was, there's been several different discussions from a what could be happen if the water is unpalatable, or what, what would we do in the situation where we don't have a water source? So looking at alternatives could be, you know, how do we deal with saltwater? You know, is it wells? Is it, we just don't know what options are there. The other one is the blue-green algae, which is also becoming more prevalent around. So some of the discussion or, or one of the avenues we can take is what other filtration mechanisms, or what else can we put in place with our water treatment facility so that we can filter out? But we just don't know what's available or what technologies we can use, so studies would look at that. And speaking with staff today on the urban forestry strategy, I think there's, we need to know direction from Counsel as to what level of look and feel you want of an urban forestry strategy, so that could be a further discussion. But it was felt that we could do something more internally, looking at Arizona bylaws, looking at some of the regulations that we could put in place. And the compost feasibility study has been on the discussions, has actually, has been one of the top discussion pieces that the Environmental Advisory Committee has talked about for the last two, two or so years. And we did try for the more residential used ones, but I think it's an important step to look at more of a community-based or regional-based, and just for the thought and feeling that, how else can we divert our waste? What else can we do with greenhouse gas emissions from transportation or reduction of our wastes that's being, that's currently going to the landfill? So those were the options and, and some of the discussion points from the EAC.
That's a good, good point, especially the freshwater options, like figuring out how to work with the existing lake is important, too, with the algae bloom, right? So, and about the compost feasibility study, when we were at the courthouse doing Counsel, I know that we had the opportunity to get a presentation from the committee, and that was a hot ticket item back then, so it's good to see that that's on top. So a couple of questions, and then I'll open up to rest of Counsel, is it's up to $50,000, is my understanding?
Through, Your Worship, what we would be looking at for a lot of these projects is anywhere between 35,000 and 50,000 for the, for the studies.
But there's no limit per se?
There's no limit per se for, from the province. It's what you request from the province. And just from what similar requests have come in over the last several years for ETF, that's the range you'd be looking at.
Perfect. And is there any rule that says they can only fund one for the Town of Sanders? Is there opportunity to fund multiple?
You have the opportunity to submit as many as you want. It becomes to the province based on how they would like to distribute the funds, so.
Okay, perfect. That answers that, so. In theory, there's not submit one, not submit two, not submit, it's really up to us what we want to submit. So Counsel, I guess, over to you for any questions on, or any, anything you want to add? Counselor Heenan?
Yes, Your Worship and Counsel. I just have a comment, really. I think this is, this is a great idea, Counselor Blanchard. We're looking at building new construction in town. We're also looking at amalgamation with two other LSDs. So I think it's the time to really go on board with all of this, and especially the freshwater sources. I feel very strongly about that, because you can't have anything, and we learned at the municipal planning meetings that one way to kill a community is not to take our water resources seriously. So I am very proactive on the water resources. So I thank you for bringing this forward, and thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Heenan. Anyone else like to add any thoughts? It feels like two is one that we would have to give more direction. One would be just a feasibility study, and three would be kind of just tell us, but two has a little bit to do with our views as well, but it doesn't mean it can't be incorporated after we're successful. But it feels a little different than the other two, because it would probably take a little bit of input from everyone around the table. But I think what this would do is tell us what other communities are doing. Is that safe to say?
Are you speaking on to the urban forestry strategy?
Urban forestry strategy, yeah.
Yes, so I mean, there, there are other urban forestry strategies that are out there for different communities, but it really comes down to how Counsel wants to see implementation or what you want to see as implementation before we could even go forward.
So a few years ago, when it came to like the utility bill, like water, we had a consultant come in and walk us through that. Would that be a similar process where they work with Counsel to kind of develop one? Is that the idea behind that? Just so I have a good understanding what that is.
Yeah, so there would have to be, like, it would be a consultant brought in to, to work with Counsel staff and the public to find exactly what that happy medium is that everyone would be comfortable with, and then it would be up to Counsel if you, how you would want to implement it, based on the recommendations.
And for staff's perspective, there's no concern over submitting all three and seeing what is successful and what's not, or is that, like, I know there's had some work to be done with every submission, I'm assuming.
The only concern is, Your Worship, is that you're letting them pick and choose what your top priority is. So, you know, they, if you only put one or two, and you might focus in on those, but in some years, we've had multiples, some years, we've had one, and even some years, we've got rejected all out, but.
Perfect. All right, Counsel, I'm going to look for some consensus here. Is there, is there a strategy here you'd like to do? Submit two? Is there, you want to submit all three and leave it in the Environmental Trust Fund's hands? How, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Blanchard, are you reaching for your mic?
Yeah, just a quick comment, I guess. I'm not sure what strategy maybe works best here, but I would only, I would only mention, compost feasibility study has been a priority for the Environmental Advisory Council for some time. I would also make the point, though, that with the amalgamation, with the changes that are happening, and I believe our, the contract for waste disposal, garbage pickup is coming up soon, would that not be a, a topic we could maybe enter into anyways because of, you know, the, where we are right now? So I'm, I'm just throwing that out there. Regional Service Commission, they have individuals there. I'm just wondering how that conversation goes and, and, you know, we're, I'm wondering what could happen there, maybe without, maybe the, the, the study, the feasibility study? Would the, is that something that's, at the Regional Service Commission level?
It feels regional to your, to your point, especially like, I know you're talking household, but if you're getting into commercial, like if you're looking to compost from our schools, for example, that's got to be a regional approach. Not to say we can't find something within the town, but if you look at recycling, it's a regional approach, so.
I mean, and it's, Your Worship, sorry with that.
Go ahead.
I, I know at the, at the, at the committee level, it was sort of discussed at both, right? Should we go, we, we initially were focusing sort of just within the municipality, and then we sort of talked more about the regional level. Mr. Nauper, would you say that the Counsel or the committee was more at the, the regional level in terms of where we ended?
They were, they were looking, through, Your Worship, they were looking at both options. I mean, on a regional scale, it, it looks and works better, because you're working with your other communities to, to work unitedly with this. There are other regional service commissions in New Brunswick that do offer composting, so it's not out of the realm of it being a regional strategy or project. But they did have local concerns as well.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So thoughts, is there any, is there a recommendation of two, or do you want to just submit all three and let the province? Again, over to, to you guys. I, there's no right or wrong answer here. Counselor Heenan?
Yes, Your Worship. I think as a Counsel, we should prioritize our number one and work our way down from there. And the reason I say that, if we go in wishy-washy, they won't do any of them, but if we come in with a strong recommendation for one, followed by two and three, I think it would look better. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
All right. Are we allowed to rank them? No?
Counsel, you can rank them. That just, it just lists, it just lists as the priority for Counsel. So when we write the grant, we would say this is the Counsel's number one priority.
Okay. Does that make sense to everybody? Does that make sense to everyone? Okay. So Counsel, over to you, but the freshwater is so, so imperative to the community, and not that number, the compost and the urban forestry isn't important, it's just without freshwater, we, we don't have a community. So to me, unless someone sees it different, that is number one, myself. And number two, I know that number one priority, I believe, of the Environmental Committee has been compost. And number three, would be urban, again, if anyone feels differently, tell me urban forestry, because we have new counselors joining us from the LSDs, and it'd be really good to include them as part of the process, so maybe that's something we could do an exercise for. Again, if we aren't successful, and maybe prioritize for next year, this is an annual fund, but does anybody feel any differently? It's just a quick opinion based on what I'm hearing and feeling.
Fine.
Work for you guys? Okay. So we are going to do all three, so just to be clear, I guess Counselor Blanchard, if you want to read the motion and then list them, I guess, in that order? Have you got it?
So we're going essentially three, one, two, is our...
Correct, yeah.
All right, so I'll, I'll reread the motion then. That Counsel of the Town of St. Andrews supports the following Environmental Trust Fund 2022-2023 applications. First priority would be alternative freshwater sources slash opportunities for St. Andrews. Our second priority would be a compost feasibility study, and our third priority would be an urban forestry strategy. An I so move.
Thank you for that, Counselor Blanchard. Seconders, Counselor Neal favoring the right. Okay, any discussion, any further discussion on this one, I should say? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor of approving this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is everybody that has been approved, and that will wrap up Counselor Blanchard, and we're on to Public Safety Committee, which is Counselor Neal.
Thank you, Your Worship. This is reference number P S two-two-one-one-one-one, dated November 1st, 2022, and the subject is the revocation of appointment of Shelley Dunn, bylaw enforcement officer for the Town of St. Andrews. The background reads, "Under the Local Governance Act, Counsel appoints and revokes appointments of bylaw enforcement officers. As Ms. Shelley Dunn has finished her contract for the Town of St. Andrews for 2022, Counsel must follow the procedures of revocation of the appointment of Shelley Dunn as a bylaw enforcement officer for the Town of St. Andrews. The Town has two current acting bylaw enforcement officers, Chris Spear, CIO Treasurer, and Paul Nauper, Clerk and Senior Administrator." And the motion reads that Counsel, the Town of, the Town of St. Andrews revokes the appointment of Shelley Dunn as bylaw enforcement officer for the Town of St. Andrews. And I so move, Your Honor, Your Worship.
Thank you, seconder for that one. Counselor Heenan won that one. It was close. Any discussion on this motion? Okay? All in favor of approving this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is everybody. That one has also been carried. So at this point, we're moving on to Business, Tourism, Heritage, and Culture. Counselor Hurdle?
Thank you, Your Worship. This is in reference to B T H C two-two-one-zero-zero-four, and the subject is Bylaw 22-05, a bylaw of the Town of St. Andrews to impose a special business improvement levy second reading. And the background is, "As part of downtown beautification initiatives, the St. Andrews Business Improvement Area collects an annual levy from its members to pay for various projects and events. The BIA, established in 1984, is a geographical area between Water Street from Princess Royal Street to Elizabeth Street. All businesses within this area are within the BIA and are subject to the annual levy. As per the Business Improvement Act of New Brunswick, Counsel must set the levy annually by bylaw, which also includes approval of their budget and a public hearing of objections. The first reading was on October the 3rd, 2022. The public hearing of objections was today, and so we're in the second reading now. So as per the BIA Act, the bylaw and budget have been posted in the St. Croix Courier for two consecutive weeks, October 17th and October 24th, in addition to the public hearing of objections. The motion before us is that Counsel grants leave for second reading of Bylaw 22-05, a bylaw of the Town of St. Andrews to impose a special business improvement levy for 2023 in the Town of St. Andrews. An I so move."
Thank you, a seconder. Deputy Mayor Akagi. Any discussion on this one? We just had the hearing of objections earlier this evening. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of going to second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's no one, so we will go to second reading. This is the Town of Sanders Bylaw Number 22-05, a bylaw of the Town of Sanders to impose a special business improvement levy pursuant to Section 5.1 of the Business Improvement Areas Act, R S N B 2004, Circuit 102. Be it enacted by the Counsel of the Town of Sanders as follows. One, that a specific business improvement tax shall be levied for the calendar year 2023 on all non-residential property within the business improvement area of the town, said area having been designated in the Town of Sanders Bylaw Number 72 enacted on June 4th, 1984. Number two, that the special business improvement tax for the calendar year 2023 shall be at the rate of 20 cents on each $100 assessment, for the real property being the non-residential property in the business improvement area. It was read the first time the third day of October 2022, and now read the second time on the seventh day of November 2022. Thank you. That one is complete, and I believe we're on to the next one, Counsel Hurdle.
Thank you, Your Worship. This is in reference to B T H C twenty-two-one-one-zero-two, and the subject is the heritage bylaw process and next steps. The background is, "As per the direction of the, of the Counsel for a heritage bylaw, staff have reviewed the Heritage Act on the Province of New Brunswick and have created a quick, frequently asked questions for Counsel to review. Please see the attached document for additional background details. If Counsel wishes to proceed with the development of a heritage bylaw, Counsel will need to establish a heritage board. The Board's purpose is to develop the bylaw and then implement it with the, the support of town staff. The Board shall consist of not less than five members and not more than 11 members based on the following. One member of the Counsel, at least one property owner in the municipality that has demonstrated interest in heritage conservation in the municipality, at least one resident, resident in the municipality who is a member of a local organization concerned with heritage conservation, note must be appointed from a list of nominees submitted by the societies or organizations, at least one person with professional knowledge and work experience in the field of architecture, restoration architecture, or historic architecture. If no such person is available, a person with professional knowledge and work experience in general restoration renovation. Other members that may meet any of the following requirements, from the listed above qualified persons, professional knowledge and work experience in community or urban planning, archaeology and paleontology, a member of a natural or cultural heritage society, be a non-resident user in the municipality as defined by the BIA Act, a resident of a municipal heritage conservation area established by the municipality, a resident of the municipality with a general interest in heritage conservation. If Counsel is set to move forward, staff can start to take applications from interested persons looking to participate in the heritage board. And the motion before us is that Counsel of the Town of St. Andrews enacts a heritage board and starts accepting applications for members of the board."
Thank you very much, Counsel Hurdle. A seconder for this motion. Counselor Blanchard? All right, Counsel, this is, looks like the first step, just for the public's information. The proposal that council's looking for is that this would be for the downtown business district only. Counsel, is there any debate or conversation on this particular motion? Counsel Heenan.
Always first at the gate. Thank you, Your Worship. Just, we've outlined what folks need to be, or participants of the board need to have for qualifications. What if one of those positions is not met? Like, what if we get everything except one of these? Does the board go, does the committee still get constructed? Or what happens in that case? That's number one. And number two, is there a budget associated with this? Because if we need to hire professional folks, who's gonna pay them? That's my two questions.
Well, normally I'd be able to answer the, the second one on budget, but not this year. So I'll defer these both to, to staff for comment.
Thank you, Worship. Noticing the wording, it said that the committee shall consist of, so that will be, could potentially be a problem, but I think we have lots of qualified people in the town, so if they don't throw their names in, we may have to hook them in or something, go begging or whatever. Actually, the question on budget is very relevant. We probably have enough, not probably, we should have enough to get started with it, because we always set aside some consultation budgets for council's direction through the year. But it should be known that one of the positions that if you set up the board, I think, and look at Zander's, a heritage preservation officer, that has to be set up, that is the, like a staff member that specializes in this. And really, there's no one within our current staff, including RSC, RSC members, who feel they have the proper qualifications. So we've talked to a couple of other municipalities, being the cities, that would loan us people that could act as that role. We haven't gone as far as to talk pricing or anything, but just so you know, we'd have to assume that if we get to that point, that the bylaws put in place, we'd have to subcontract that specific role to an individual that has the experience and qualifications related to it.
Thank you very much. So, more to come. Okay, any other discussion? Counsel Hurdle.
I guess, obviously, this is a, an important topic to a lot of members in the community, not, not to mention myself, and has, has come up in, in, in community discussions quite often. I guess my, my request would be, since it is so, you know, this is not something that's done alone, it requires three people who have the above specified credentials, but then can have up to 11 members. What I really want to see happen is that, I mean, this is contingent upon community involvement, so if we do put the call out there to, to, to get people involved in this, I, I hope that we would see, you know, people putting their names forward to take part in this. And I guess my suggestion is if we don't have people putting their names forward in a reasonable amount of time, that we revisit this as a direction that we're taking, maybe look in a different direction.
Fair, fair comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else? You can go a second time, and I'll make sure no one else wants to go first before. Okay? You are good to go.
I solely agree with Counsel Hurdle, simply because I don't want to see a board established that doesn't have the right qualifications of the people that's needed to carry this out properly. And that is my big concern. I am all for it, absolutely, but it has to be managed in a correct and responsive way to make the community aware and to get the people. We know there's the people in town who could do some of this if they're willing to do it, or if they're not, is the question. So I would be with Counsel Hurdle that if, if the committee is not made up of the proper condiment of people, then we should revisit this.
Perfect. Thank you. Awareness is key, not just for committee members, but for the public. We want them to know what's happening. And the other thing my recommendation is, is slow isn't a bad thing. This has been a couple times before council, assuming that you go ahead with this, and, you know, fast-tracking, it shouldn't be the option, should be about doing it the right way. So, Counsel, is there anyone else? Otherwise, I'll call the question. Counsel Gomishel.
Thank you, Worship. I have some reservations about wading into the heritage, the heritage bylaw kind of realm. I recall, recall a window that got replaced in the last council on, on a building, and there was a huge public outcry about the, the chintzy window. When people, you know, maybe, if you look at it from the other side, maybe the window was leaking, and Buddy got a deal on fixing the window. It's, it's nice to keep the buildings downtown historic, but there's no funding, as far as I know, over, in the last six years, anyway, the only funding that's been available for fixing up downtown buildings has been, it was a $500 grant if you painted your building. So there's not a lot of funding out there to be telling people how they should be managing their buildings. So hand in hand with any heritage bylaw, it needs to, there will be perhaps budget considerations or will need to be, to leverage, to leverage funding from other sources to help people keep those buildings the way they are, because they're definitely not, they're, they're old boats, and they need, they need constant work, and sometimes that's expensive. So that's my reservation, but I'll certainly go along with the crew for now.
Thank you, Counsel Gomishel, but it's a valid point. The, the last time that I went through this, there was often a conversation over a heritage bylaw through enforcement or heritage bylaw through incentive. And that's one of the many conversations that, if we're going down this path, that you're gonna have an opportunity to discuss further. Any other member? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor of approving this motion, please signify by saying aye. Did you have someone? Okay, you're good. Everyone, I, I hear. Okay, that's everybody. That's been carried. Did you have?
You want us to follow up? Question, Your Worship, is how long do you want us to accept applications? We're at a really strange time, even in a normal year, we got Christmas a few weeks down the road. So I didn't know if you want us to accept applications in the new year, or have like a cutoff in the third week of December and revisit this in early January, just.
My, my recommendation, Counsel, would be to make it the end of January, just so new residents, Shamcook Bayside, are also, at that time, residents of the Town of St. Andrews, and they would have the opportunity for 30 days to submit as well. If that makes sense?
Perfectly fine, yeah.
Because we're all St. Andrews as of January 1st.
Yeah.
Make sense, everyone? Okay. Perfect. All right. That was the, that's it for Counsel Hurdle, correct? Yep. So we're into, at this point, Counsel Gomishel.
Thank you, Worship. The next one is reference number RCS 221107, dated November 1st, submitted by myself, and the subject is Trail Advisory Committee for the Town of St. Andrews. The background reads, "The Council of the Town of St. Andrews recognizes the importance of active transportation networks with the ongoing collaborative work between the town and Sorte. To foster closer collaborations, staff recommends council formalize the establishment of a committee that will allow major stakeholder, major stakeholders, pardon me, to meet periodically, share information, and provide recommendations to the council related to active transportation networks. Please see the attached terms of reference for the Trail Advisory Committee for the Town of St. Andrews." And the motion reads, "The council accepts the terms of reference for the Trail Advisory Committee for the Town of St. Andrews." Moved by myself.
Perfect. So.
Oh, Shelley, sorry.
Nope, the first one's fine.
It's two motions then, sorry.
Yeah, you read the first one, right?
Yeah.
So, so we'll look for a Secunder for the first one. Got Counsel Heenan very quick again. He's got your number tonight. Any discussion on the first one? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of accepting the terms of reference, please signify. That's everybody. The terms of reference have been adopted. The next one, before you read it, Counsel Gomishel, it's another one where we have to add. There's currently, if you look at the list here, there's no one from council, so we have two, I believe, from Sorte, two from town staff, and then one from the regional service, Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission. So I think it'd be good to probably have two from council, maybe one could even be an alternate, but I think it's important that council's part of this process as well for communication. I can see a lot of different ways of looking at it. It's recreation through Counsel Gomishel, it could be tourism through Counsel Hurdle. I guess.
We also need for January, new council.
I could also, yeah, open it up in January for new counselors, but is this something that you wanted, there's some items that you probably want to discuss sooner rather than later, would be my assumption. We could always revise it at the new year, is that safe to say, if one of those members is really?
Your Worship, you get the opportunity to appoint.
Oh, sorry, I can appoint. So do I, do I need to even do this, or can I just talk to every council member and then appoint them?
Through you, Your Worship, it's your choice, but it's, in the end, it's the mayor that does appoint after the terms of reference.
Okay, well, I'd like to add them, just so we have everybody. I don't, just because I have the authority doesn't mean I want to exercise it. Does any, would anyone like to be on this committee? I know there's some passion, I know Counsel Gomishel. Is there anyone else that would be, it'd be good to have two counselors. And the other thing is, please note that of a meetings during the day or whatever, I don't mind filling in if someone can't make it for work, as long as you guys are okay with that. Is there anyone else that has, would like to kind of be Counsel Hurdle? That's two. Anyone else? We're gonna have an election here? Anyone else really? No? Okay, so we'll just do a friendly amendment and add Counsel Gomishel and Counsel Hurdle, and then I'll get you to read it. Counsel Gomishel.
Thank you, Worship. So the new motion reads, "The council points the following members to the Trail Advisory Committee for the Town of St. Andrews. Firstly, Dr. David Johnson from Sorte, Alan Fiander from Sorte, Mr. Spear, the CIO Treasurer, Mr. Knopper, our town clerk, Sherry Stewart, the implementation manager of Recrit Services for the Regional Service Commission, myself, and Counsel Hurdle."
You got that for the, for the man. Okay, Secunder for that particular motion. We've got Deputy Mayor Akagi quick that time. Any debate on this one? Counsel Neil? You want the position, don't you?
No, no, thank you. It was just a question, Your Worship, with regards to the terms of reference. In the terms of reference, it does mention seven members. Again, it's only had one counselor listed, but the one that's missing is the member at large, sort of that public representation, sort of a user. I was just wondering if that, if we needed to sort of change the terms of reference there to make it eight members, or, or are we using the second counselor sort of as a?
As an alternate, is that, does?
Counsel Neil brings up a good point.
It's good that we should clarify.
But we can amend that at the next meeting, just don't.
Let's just amend, let's just amend that at the next, I'd like to, I think there should be two voices at council on that, if everyone could. If you both want to go, you both should be able to go, how about that? You want to call it, does that make sense to you, Counsel Neil? Just update it to eight the next meeting?
I am okay with that, yes.
Okay. Any other questions on this one?
I have another motion to read.
Okay, all in favor of approving these members, please signify by saying aye. And that has been completed. So at this point, that takes us through the end of Recreation Community Service. We're now in Planning and Economic Development, which is Counsel Heenan. And once again, to be consistent with my previous conflict of interest, if you give me a moment, I will recuse myself once again, and be back shortly. Thanks.
We don't have a sheet, we just have staff discussion. So Mr. Knopper, are you going to lead this? Because it's on yours. I think it's your, as soon as the mayor leaves.
So, thank you, Deputy Mayor. So council provided to you, so tonight is strictly for discussion and debate for council, and then to provide staff direction on how you would like to proceed. So provided to you is a staff report that highlights questions and comments that came from the public hearing of objections. They range from traffic study issues to RCMP policing, to stormwater management and processes in that light. Each question sort of highlights where we are and what's within the setup. So if council has any questions within the, the staff reports, you can ask them, but there, the information is right there for you.
Is Ms. Bevington on?
Just.
It's not, sorry to have her on.
So from staff's perspective, Deputy Mayor, what we're really looking for is to see if you're ready to move to next steps, that you've had a presentation on what the conceptual drawings are. We're going on through first reading. This requires amendment to both the municipal plan and the zoning bylaw, but before you get into third reading, we'd also parallel develop a development agreement, which, because of the nature of the zoning bylaw amendments, we can kind of control what we want to have, like negotiate to the developer. But it's up to, you'd let us know. To that point now, where we can start to go through those steps, which would be to have a second reading of both amendments, but then that staff would start to work with the developer in getting together a development agreement, that we'd start to bring drafts and getting input from council and, and any concerns, questions. From it's really, that, that is the natural next step. It's, nothing's approved, but it's kind of the next phase, that if you think you've got enough information to start forming a development agreement, we can move, start moving towards that. If you require more information or have more concerns, we can go back to the developer and say that council still requires information, ABC, in order to make more decisions and to get this thing to proceed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Knopper, for your concise report, that is well detailed. And thank you, Mr. Spear, for your enhancement on this. Now, Counsel, what is your preference and your decisions for this right now? Any conversation? Okay, Counsel Hurdle.
Thank you, Worship. Just a point of clarification, we're taking this one at a time, right? 302 and then the other, okay.
Counselor Blanchard?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So again, thank you, staff, for the report. There's, said detail there where, where required, I think, in some, some situations, it's up to the, up to the developer to, to, to deal with some of the issues that were brought forward by the public. I did bring up earlier today, or earlier this evening, rather, that we're still lacking sort of the detailed plans of, of what it will look like inside. We've seen some renderings of the outside, so, and, and, you know, much appreciated, but I think there's more detail there that I would like to see, and I'm not sure. I'm, I'm comfortable with the staff report, and it, it has addressed some of the concerns that were brought forward by, by, by the, by the townspeople. I'm comfortable moving to like a second reading, but I'm just wondering, certainly before we would get to third reading or, or enter into a develop, a, a agreement or a development scheme, I'd want to see that the, the internal drawings and have a bit more detail on the structure itself. I'd also be happy to get that. Again, that's why I asked the question in terms of timelines, when that might be available to us. If it doesn't delay the process that much further, would it, would it make sense just to simply wait before we moved to second reading to have that information? Or is that going to, I, I just don't know where we sit and, and what the feeling of, of staff would be, what the recommendation from staff would be.
Spear, I guess it depends what, what you're looking for, Counselor. From the public's perspective, usually the external is, is more of a concern than the internal. You certainly can ask for it, remembering that, you know, they have to go through the building bylaws, or, you know, through, and all the things that require that. So we're just the first step, but then once they make a permit application, there's a whole bunch of steps. If you do have concerns or have suggestions, especially from environmental concerns, that's great, and we can pass that along. Typically, we don't get, we get floor plans without getting into details of the inside, but again, because of rezoning, you certainly can ask for it. I guess I'd say that if there's something specific you're wondering about the inside, it might be good to let the developer know kind of what you're looking for. She has some, she's provided some information on the style of, of units and, and, you know, basic layout, but if we want more than that, we'll have to let her know kind of what the information is being requested.
Okay, Counsel Blanchard?
If I could just, yeah, follow up, thanks. And I appreciate that, Mr. Spear. I, I guess, to me, this is a different kind of development than what we've seen in the past, where the town is an active partner, I, I believe, in this particular development because of the potential of, of the investment of taxpayers' funds. So I'm looking for, I guess, like, that sort of detail to be sort of engaged as an active partner. I think we need to be, and this is, this is, you know, the one project that we're, that's on the table right now, that would really address that affordable housing crisis that we've identified as, as a major priority for, for this council and for this, this community. And I guess I'm, I'm sort of looking to see, we have an idea and understanding of, of, based on our conversations with Ms. Bevington, and of where those, those, those rates will be. I'm just curious to see, get more information about what the insides will look like for the people that are going to live there. I guess that's what I'm kind of, sort of going towards there. So that's the kind of information I'm looking for.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
Is that okay, Mr. Spear? You have any?
Certainly.
Any other counselor?
I'm sorry.
Oh, Counsel Gomishel?
I already expressed a concern about the traffic flow going from two entrances to that property to one. Just would need to be convinced that that's the wise thing to do, not being a traffic engineer myself, but just, if that can be addressed.
And Mr. Knopper has some of those concerns in the traffic flow in his report.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And Mr. Councillor Heenan? Do you have a question or you have a comment?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I had it.
Sorry. I went to Councillor Gomishel because he's in my sightline.
Okay. No, you'll have to come back to me because I've forgotten it, sorry.
Councillor Neil, anything else? No. Councillor Blanchard, Councillor Hurdle?
Thank you very much. There was just some mention of a reduction in speed limits in the notes as well, and I'd just like to see that pursued. I, I think there is a pretty rapid drop from seventy to fifty in that area, and if we're talking about increased pedestrians in the zone. Unfortunately, the crosswalk that currently exists is often ignored as it's, as it is right now. And I think it's just a safety issue, or a deadly safety issue waiting to happen. And I'd like to see us to take steps to avoid that if possible.
Thank you, Councillor Hurdle? And Councillor Heenan?
Thank you, Your Worship. There comes a point, you know, that we look at these things and, and we've got this nice staff report, and, and people's, people's comments have been addressed, I think, to the utmost, even includes the RCMP present. I find that we really can't become a council of micromanagement. But I understand what people want to see, but, I mean, these folks have built two or three buildings, I think they have under their belt. And if we decide to go with this, we have to leave it to the people who approve, who, the building site coordinators, everything to be done, because it has to be done by a building standards of the province of New Brunswick. So, I, I don't want to find myself into being a micromanager of a project because I'm not trained enough to know what I'm doing. I really feel it's left to the professionals, and I feel that it's, you know, if, if this was someone new that has never developed anything before, might have a little more. But we, we, we have happy people in St. Stephen from their buildings, and they've, they've got a wait list. So, I think that if we can get affordable housing, I think we've got it made. Anyway, that's my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Heenan. The other people that are involved are our staff, and they're very competent too. So, we trust in their judgment as well, I think.
And thank you for both, but just from Councillor Blanchard's perspective, just to say, rezoning does give council a lot of flexibility in this, and we certainly appreciate your faith in staff, but this is kind of your one step to be able to, use the word loosely, but control the process.
Yes.
Because of the rezoning, because once that's all approved and the development scheme bylaw, then it's passed to the rest of us to, or development scheme, sorry, the development agreement, the development agreement, then that's passed to us, then to manage that beyond that to meet your wishes. So, you know, all great points, but certainly council has, has the right at this stage to provide input as they deem appropriate.
All right, thank you staff, and thank you Councillor Heenan. And if there is nothing else, then we will invite the mayor back. Thank you very much. Thank you CHCO TV for going to get him.
All right, so that brings us to the next one under Councillor Heenan, which again would be a discussion for council. Going to do it a little unusual, I'm going to be, I've talked to members of council, and I'm going to let Deputy Mayor Akaji chair this particular one simply for the fact that there's some comments that I want to make, and I figured through talking with all of you, I, I wanted to spark some, maybe some conversation tonight because I think we're at that point. But I, I already talked to a few councillors, and it looks like they were ready to do the same. So, I appreciate the Deputy Mayor, not just always attending any kind of conflicts or any events sometimes, but also always willing, whenever I ask, she's, she's quick to, to raise her hand to say, how can I support you? So, thank you very much Deputy Mayor for doing that. So, at this point for chair, I'll pass it over to you.
Thank you, Your Worship, and Councillor Heenan. We are looking at this report from the staff. Do you want to start it off, Count, Mr. Nopper? All of a sudden, I lost his name. Or Mr. Spear?
Yeah, I guess at this point, yeah, we've had several, several meetings and suggestions. And I guess, at this point, you've gone through two readings of the amendment to the secondary municipal plan. And, and as you know, there's been a lot of conversations from the community of for and against this particular project. And so, staff just wants to see holistic discussion tonight to see what the next steps are, if council is ready to go to third reading, if there's more information being requested, if where exactly we sit with this file. That tonight, we're not approving third reading, but it's to give final direction to staff on exactly if you're ready to proceed to third reading in the next meeting or to, to move this project along, or to, to decide that you're not ready to do this amendment to the secondary municipal plan and request that the developer rethink what they're going to be doing there. So, I don't think, council, you need us to go through the whole report again.
No.
We certainly could, but it's stuff that I think has been brought up several times and discussed in several meetings. So, it's just to get further direction, and I guess a chance for you to, to debate it, and if you're ready to move to third reading in the next meeting probably.
So, we open it up to council?
Pardon?
All right, well, we'll open it up to council?
Open it up to council, yeah.
All right, council, what is your wish at this time? Councillor?
Mayor.
Oh, Mayor, would you like to go first? Or Councillor Heenan? Arm wrestle and get it over with, want to get home tonight.
Thank you, Your Worship. For fear of, of shifting the tone in the room here a, a little bit, I just wanted to, to take a moment and address the, the tone of rhetoric that has surrounded debate over primarily two fifty-six, but also three oh two to a certain degree. I'm probably not going to do myself any favors by what I'm about to say, but, but despite that, I think it's still important that it's said, and I apologize, I had to make notes because I tend to, tend to ramble, as I'm doing right now. When I decided to run for council, I promised myself that I would, that I would do my best to, to push for positivity, for dialogue, for respectful dialogue, for respect, and to reject debate that is driven by, by fear and speculation. It's, it's important for me, perhaps, you know, hazardous politically, but important for me to, to walk the walk in this circumstances. So, a little bit about me, when I lived in my, my little apartment in Toronto, I, I had one little window that let in only a little bit of sunlight that my apartment saw. And I remember being horrified when the, the Portuguese bakery beside me was sold, and the new owners decided to develop a modern mid-rise office building, blotting out any sunlight that my, my little apartment saw forever. On top of that, I remember finding out that the developer had been fined for building this without a permit. And so, I got on the phone at that point to my local councillor, one of the first times that I became politically active, and only to find out that the councillor never answered his phone, didn't respond to his voicemails, never returned my call, and who showed actual disdain for his constituents in a way that very clearly prioritized development over people, and shrugged me off. All this to say that at this point as well, this was the major turning point on my decision to move back home to St. Andrews, you know, a place where these sorts of things don't happen. But I say that now to show that while I understand and have experienced the, the emotions that have been voiced before us in this room, what is happening here, and I want to be clear about this, what's happening here with us is not what happened to me there. I can't speak for all council, but I know that personally, I have agonized over the decisions that are in front of us today and have worried about balancing all the needs of this community and the necessity of, of this, getting this pinpoint precise right. I have taken everything that's been said or written in to us seriously and soberly. And before I get too far ahead of myself, I think it's important to note that I still do have serious concerns over this development. However, that said, what we have heard here in this room from opponents of this project have often been arguments in bad faith. They've started with a claim for support on this project with due care and consideration for several points that need to be addressed. Yet, when that due care and consideration have been shown, the goalposts were moved. And so, we went back as councils, back to the drawing board to listen and accommodate, and, and yet again, those goalposts were moved, again and again, which reveals that at the heart of this argument was never really a desire to support this project, but had always been a desire to stop it by whatever means. And as, as council continued to consider all points of view and weigh this very difficult decision, that silent, that quiet thoughtfulness, I think, was mistaken for assent for this project. And those critical of the project became determined to generate dissent through speculation and fear. For example, concerns, which I cite, you know, for example, around, around HVAC noise or, or underground parking light pollution, that there is just simply no data to support that. But more importantly, and I think concerning for everyone in this room, is that that dissent has now opened the door to ad hominem attacks against the character of this council. And I take exception to that. So, maybe it was thought that a soft approach at the outset would encourage more members of council to agree to oppose this. But respectfully, arguments of bad faith are intellectually dishonest, and they don't help you make the point that you think that you're making. And now, I have to wonder, how many of the households who are signatories on these letters that we've received were themselves coerced by spurious claims designed to capitalize on fear of worst-case scenarios and speculation? Because it's very easy, as we all know from today's political climate, to capitalize on people's fear. So, speaking for myself, I think, in my opinion, that this is a well-designed, thoughtful development that carefully increases density in the historic plat. And this is the kind of development that we need if we think about our future and the future needs of people who live here and who will live here, even if we think about it only through the lens of climate crisis and how we will all need to think differently about how we all live together. However, I still have serious concerns, knowing that beyond this request, this request to make an amendment, we still need to make at least six variances to the zoning bylaw, especially parking. I remember suggesting that we lower parking requirements further, but we decided not to do that as a council. So, I, that, that's going to be a really difficult one for us to square as a council without being hypocritical. So, because as a group, I know we decided to keep them where we are. But the only way I know how to be fair and to treat each request independently is on its own merits. In my opinion, do I think that the height request is a violation of the spirit of the secondary municipal plan? Not in and of itself, no, I don't. But if we do move forward with this, I look forward to the development scheme and how we're going to square some of these issues as a council. But I do hope that further discussion with the community, it's, it's in hopes that it's with honest and reasonable debate and in good faith. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Councillor Hurdle. That is great, a great summary of what has occurred. And thank you for your opinion. We really appreciate that. Mayor, would you like to go next?
Yeah, sure, thank you Deputy Mayor. So, thank you very much for your comments. I think we are saying similar things, maybe not exactly the same, but definitely some, some same spirit there. And I, I think it's important to open up, to say that you articulate it very well, you had your notes. I wrote mine in the playground today in the wind. So, it's in pen, so it might be a little harder for me to, to cascade. It's clearly eloquently as you did. But I, I think debate is important. I think it actually shows the process. I look at, if you look at the Wellness Park down at the point, when there was an individual that was questioning it and presented, Councillor Blanchard actually clarified his thought process behind it. And despite how the thought process wasn't the same, at least they respected how you came up with your decision. I think that's why it's important that all of us, as much as possible, weigh in on this, because it is one of those conversations, it's not necessarily a fifty-fifty, but no matter what you decide, there's going to be a portion of the community that tells you you've got it wrong. So, the best thing you can do is just say what's on your mind. And I think it's important to note that, and I'll talk a little bit about, about some of the objections, but I think it's important to know, especially in the letters, that I want to thank the public both in support, but also in opposition. To think that when you write a letter that it's not read, I can assure you that it is read. In this particular development, there was a lot of reading. Some people did use the opportunity to write in multiple letters, but there were some people that just sent in one, and all of them were valued, either they were in support or opposition. And I just want to acknowledge council, no matter which way this goes, I wanted to, to look at all of you and say, you a hundred percent had to look at this development and explore it. We are in a housing crisis. You know, if you look at St. Andrews, it doesn't have a diverse housing inventory, and the fact that this took no taxpayer incentive, this was just a pure proposal. If you did anything less than the hearing of objections, I really don't think you would have done it justice because you, you do have to hear what the community thinks on a development like this. Specifically on the hearing of objections, many have actually told me that it was very tough to watch, and it ties in very much with, with some of your comments. But it's important to note that although it wasn't pleasant, that, you know, it was democracy. People had the opportunity to tell us what they don't like. And that's one of the purest things about municipal government, is decisions are made at the provincial and federal level all the time, and you don't have a voice. Well, when it comes to a hearing of objections, everybody that comes to the meeting actually can have a voice. But unfortunately for some, it actually shows the best and the worst of them, and we've seen that. There's one gentleman, I wrote his name down, Robert Ware. He opposed the project, but he was professional, he was firm. He really concentrated on the opportunity for common ground versus what was necessarily wrong. He really thought that, you know, there might be something here, it's not what I like, but let's keep working towards it. And I think that that was a very powerful message, and I can tell you, when someone like that speaks, you stop and you listen a little bit longer. And then, because I said the positive, I'll have no problem saying it. The way that Guy Grue attacked you guys was completely unacceptable in my mind. The truth of the matter is, in my opinion, you beat him in an election, and whenever there's a chance to discredit you or attack you, he's going to do it. I have zero tolerance for slander, I have zero tolerance for bullying. Him accusing staff and council of illegal activity and professionally attacking you is clearly unacceptable. Quite frankly, you raise this hand for your community because you care, but I'll be completely honest with you, you're not getting paid enough to put up with that lack of respect. And again, I can't hit that home enough. To my left and right, I want to stick up for my fellow councillors, when I got to know them, some I knew before, some I got to know right before the election, I quickly found out how important some of these volunteers in our community. Beside me, I have people that were with the fire department, coaches to youth in our community, indigenous awareness, dial-a-ride, churches, youth activities, CHCO, hospital foundations, Kiwanas, the list goes on. Professionally, I have educators, I have people in the sciences, banking, and more. To publicly try to smear you again is completely unacceptable because you're in a conversation where some people might not think the exact same way that you do. With all of that being said though, I, I think it's important to acknowledge that you can't let one person or individuals discredit some legitimate concerns from some people in our community. Some people actually spoke, even though they're upset, for the right reasons. So, to the development, myself, I even drove to St. Stephen to get into the weeds and to the development and some of the objections with Xander Gopin, who's our town planner on the line. And I always appreciate his insights. I will say, before I get into more detail, that not all letters or petitions necessarily make the, the view correct. Sometimes, there's two sides to it. One that jumps out to me is the Wellness Centre. When the Wellness Centre, that's right here, that everyone in our community seems to appreciate, helped us actually attract a second doctor, we had actually a petition of fifty or sixty signatures telling us that it shouldn't be there, it doesn't belong in a bowling alley. Well, some of those people, I'm very thankful, actually circled back and said, we got that one wrong. It's actually a wonderful addition, and now versus the town maintaining two buildings, we only have one. So, with that being said, just because there's a lot of signatures, it's not a plebiscite, it doesn't mean it's necessarily correct. But what I always get into is that when you look at the particular development, when you look at the lot beside some of these neighbors, is they should expect a development. A reasonable person would expect development. It isn't going to be empty forever, and it's not an empty view of the downtown or the ocean forever. And the truth is, I've heard that you don't own your view, and that's a hundred percent correct unfortunately. A retail housing development close to our downtown core is, in fact, best case scenario. The town must be open for change. The truth of the matter is, is we worked for a lot of years, and that's why we don't have any diverse housing, and that's why more and more people are struggling to be here. However, myself, I've always said that there is ways to develop this community without taking away from the look and feel of our community. Our zoning bylaws underneath our municipal plan and secondary plan are guiding documents on where our community is headed. These documents, with the past council, were debated heavily. We spent, what, two years on it, I think? It was, it was a lot of work. There was heavy consultation, but after the consultation, they were adopted. The current development is, in fact, contrary to our secondary, secondary plan and three out of the four height measurements, and it is enassing. If the secondary plan wanted everything in comparison to the Kennedy Inn, or Kennedy House as it's called now, there's a plug for you, it would have stated that that was, in fact, the maximum height. Approving this, to me, means that one building, any building in town can now be that size, at least in the historic downtown district. We have to change our sec, if we did adopt that, I do believe we have to change our secondary plan. If something's on the other side of it, how do you say no to that if you say yes to this? Omening it for one and not for all would certainly be inconsistent. As Councillor Hurdle mentioned, the zoning bylaw has six items that need to be varied. A person that I look up to in this community that's had lots of experience both at this table and also at the PAC once did tell me that if something needs three or four variances, it shouldn't be considered because it's outside of the guidelines for our community. Again, this one has six. Clearly, the development falls outside of our secondary municipal plan and current zoning bylaws. As a council, we are looking at a heritage bylaw. How can we expect businesses in our downtown and property owners to follow our own rules? But we are just going to drop the secondary plan so quickly because we want something to happen. It seems by approving it, in my opinion, it would be a case of do as I say, not as I do. We've heard the fear of giant tiger. You don't have to, you don't approve something over the fear of something else to come. If you start to do that, you clearly don't have a plan at all. Something could always be something else, it doesn't mean you ignore your community plans. And I will say, some people might actually welcome a giant tiger. And I will say, some people might actually welcome a giant tiger because of its prices. Not saying we want one. So the other thing that I heard is this parcel of lands has been vacant for five years. Well, hopefully there's a way that we can find common ground on this, but the truth is, it's better to be vacant for another five years than to put the wrong building there for 150. This building is great in a lot of communities, but our look and feel of our downtown is our bread and butter. It's a big reason why during the pandemic, thousands came to our community because it doesn't look like their community. We need housing. If we're going to turn back to our guiding documents, we've got to ask ourselves, is why would we do it? I will question that if 2/3 of the units are between 2,500 to 3,000 per month, are we really helping the people that we intended to help in this community? We have seen rapid population growth, where you're already struggling to see businesses could keep up with demands with workers. Surely this would benefit new residents, but I question how many of our existing seniors, young families, and workers would benefit from this. It's important to note that I was quick to celebrate that our growth went up by 14.8%. But if you look at the elementary school, our classrooms are just as small as ever, if not smaller. Lastly, we have been through the property, we've been through this property already twice for approval for other developments. This would be a third time we've been through this, and we still don't know if it's feasible. This has been a lot to put the public through, certainly our staff and council, but still we have no indication that it's going to happen? That's concerning as we continue this process. I personally recommend that council let the developer know that the planned lot is not suffice for this size of a building. It's too big for our community plan. If they revised the plan with less units, it could easily fit into our secondary plan and zoning bylaws. I do know that because of cost, this might not be feasible, but the truth of the matter is, if that lot's not feasible, it's not feasible. It doesn't mean you switch your plans just because you're trying to make a deal happen. It really, the concerns of our own bylaws and our zoning and the concerns of the neighbors shouldn't be outweighed by profitability. Perhaps, again, it might not be feasible, but perhaps a two-story building in behind with parking, for example, may be feasible. Perhaps a building closer to what existed there before might be feasible. I don't have all the answers on that, but I think those are all positive conversations. And then, in closing, I just wanted to say that a reasonable person would not expect the town to use a development scheme bylaw to work around two challenges to its secondary plan and six challenges to its zoning bylaw. Again, a reasonable person could expect a variance or two, but not with this plan. The developer should submit a different plan to council that works within the guiding bylaws and plans.
Thank you, Your Worship. A lot to be said. Councilor Blanchard.
Deputy Mayor, I wanted to jump into this as well. I agree wholeheartedly with what Councilor Hurdle and with what Mayor Henderson expressed with regards to the tone of the discussion surrounding this particular issue. I won't go into all of what I have here because I made notes as well. I think most of council probably did because I think we all wanted to speak to this. I don't think I could say it as well as Councilor Hurdle, so I won't try. I will say that, you know, the reason, certainly there was a lot, I felt some misinformation and allegations even around the council and town staff not being transparent, not providing But I think the reason we, as a council, have moved this project along to the point that we are was to allow the public to have the input, not to shut down development right away, but to allow that input in hopes that there might be some common ground we could find, find that sweet spot. You know, we recognize, I think, as a council, that there are both pros and cons to any development, and it's our job as a council to decide what's in the best interest of the community's present and the community's future. And I think we all take that, I think, very seriously. And while I didn't agree with some of the comments and information that was brought forward, there were some valid concerns. And they were concerns that I shared from the beginning as well, and I think I still do, I still am concerned about some of these issues, many of which have been mentioned now here by the two previous speakers. I would like to commend the developer, Mr. Raca, for reaching out to the community, and I think, and I feel, was very open to design changes from the beginning. He made a number of, as he mentioned earlier, has reached out a number of times. However, looking at the town's municipal plan, the secondary municipal plan, I continue to come back to things around massing and scale and the height, and then, as had been mentioned, the number of variances that would be required for other things around parking with the driveway. There were a number of things that were provided to council from Mr. Gopin and from town staff. You know, and being a resourceful developer, I have no doubt Mr. Raca could likely address some of these issues, given the opportunity. But I don't know, I don't know if enough could be done to make me feel comfortable with moving it forward as it is. I think the massing and the height, that fourth story, I think from the beginning, Mr. Raca had expressed, had basically said that without that fourth story, it was not feasible. And I think, like I said, with some of these things, I just don't think can be changed enough to make me comfortable with the development as it is. So I just wanted to, I wanted that to be out, and those would be my comments on where we are. And I guess I'll leave it to the rest of council to decide where we go from here.
Thank you, Councilor Blanchard. Any other counselor would like to speak, address this issue? Oh, sorry, Councilor Heenan, I looked your way and you didn't do anything. So Councilor Heenan, the floor is yours.
Well, I wish I was as elegant as these other two speakers. The only word that comes to mind is the vocabulary of the opposition makes me feel very disappointed in the people that are our neighbors and the way that it was done, and harshly. And the attack on Mr. Gopin, for an example, unprofessional. As we all know, I was singled out as being, as having a big conflict of interest. Mr. Mayor made that perfectly clear that I was not. However, I have not once ever said I was for or against this, and to be pinpointed as a counselor as having a conflict of interest in this project really kind of hurts. And I got to tell you that it's a very big disappointment to know that people can get harsh over a ventilation system. And to quote Mr. Raca tonight, that the people who have signed the petition have hardened their position, he is absolutely correct. Because they mentioned HVACs, they mentioned noise from cooling systems. If anybody ever remembered, the first question I asked Mr. Raca was what was going to be heating the units. I was told it was internal. It was record, it was recorded. So to hash up something that has already been answered by Mr. Raca is a hardened position because it now shows me that people are grasping at every straw they possibly can to make their point. And I just disagree with the whole verbal thing. I take personal offense to this. I ran for council because housing is a priority for me, and I'm not giving up. And I will go along with council. I listen to everything that everybody says, as you all know, and my heavens, I sure can tell you from letters that I get personally by sitting on the PAC committee, that, you know, I've been called pretty well everything. So I just think it's a very big disappointment. And I have to say that honestly. And I'm very disappointed that people would resort to such pettiness to make a point. We all can make a point. Valid points were absolutely in the gist of any of these letters. Everyone has a valid point. It's just the way it was delivered. And I'm telling you, that's a real big disappointment. And I'd like to go in public record of saying that. Thank you, Your Worship.
You're welcome, Councilor Heenan, and thank you for your comments as well. Anybody else? Councilor Neal?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'll be brief, as again, most of the things I did have notes on, have pretty much been covered. At the onset of this, again, when Mr. Raca first approached us, to be perfectly honest, I was quite optimistic about the whole thing. I thought he came with a very nice plan. Again, it did require some variances. And I'll be perfectly honest, on the surface, the height didn't initially really scare me off that badly. But as we've gone through this process, and again, I will echo what was already said about council's decision to move this process forward, simply so we could get to the public hearing of objections and hear from everybody else. I won't speak to the climate of some of that, as has already been done. But overall, basically, as we've gone through the process, and as I've listened to everything that has come through and read every letter that's come through to us, again, I do have some grave concerns with regards to the number of variances that have been requested. As they tend to pile up, I'm getting more and more stuck on, again, the height and the massing of scale, as well as the parking. I agree with the comments, again, that I think it is simply just too much of an ask for us to try and deviate from our own plans to that extent. And again, I would not be opposed to developing this piece of land. I think it's a great location, and I would really encourage Mr. Raca or any other developer to come back with something that potentially is a little bit more conforming with the secondary municipal plan and our existing bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Neal. Councilor Gomishel?
It's quarter nine, nothing particularly new to add. Just, I did have some concerns about the final aesthetics of the thing, and it's a wee too big, I guess. I used to work at the lodge one summer with Xena Garbit, and she would have said, it's a wee bit too big. So not to make a joke, it's just, it might be just a bit much for that spot, although we are in a housing crisis. And to piggyback on some of the eloquent speeches that were given earlier, discussions from earlier, you know, being able to live downtown, age in place, walk everywhere you need to get to, it's certainly an ideal location for a high-density place to live. We said to the, we said to the planners at a meeting at the courthouse about how we needed to increase, we need to increase our densification. We didn't know that, if that was a word, and this certainly does that, but it just might be, like, as Xena would say, a wee bit much. So, and in the final aesthetics of it, kind of fit in a little better, more St. Andrews, I guess someone said. It should be a little more St. Andrews, more Gables and those sorts of things. But those would be my final comments, and I won't speak to the rest of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Gomishel. I'll look around one more time. And that is the reason why I stepped down, so that the mayor could speak and voice the opinions of the council, of his opinions, but to have the counselors voice their opinions as well. So I offered to take the chair for you. That doesn't mean that I don't have a voice, it just means that I have to be in his position and his policies as we don't make comments. But the mayor speaks for us, and as deputy mayor, I guess I speak for you sometimes when I'm able to. And I may be very quiet, but I have my thoughts and whatnot, and we will discuss, as I know, as much as we can. Staff, is there anything else we can do? Mr. Spear, I see you talking.
Sorry. Just, I guess, it's next steps, council. If you want us to go back to the developer so he can hear your comments tonight and see, or do you want to take it up for debate and decide? Deputy Worship?
Yes.
Counsel in general.
Counsel, what would you like to do with this? Would you like to, for our staff to take it back and discuss with the developer, or we continue on? What would you like to do? Councilor Hurdle, our first speaker and our next speaker.
I mean, I think we have somewhat of consensus, but I think it would be fair to allow the developer a kick at the can regardless, and so I wouldn't mind bringing the comments to the developer and then moving forward from there.
Mayor, Your Worship?
I concur with Councilor Hurdle.
Okay. Councilor Neal? You're on the end.
I'm okay with that approach as well. Thank you.
Councilor Gomishel?
Same.
Councilor Blanchard?
I'm fine with that as well. Just in terms of, for direction to staff, though, when this would actually come to a vote? Because I'm guessing you're sort of wondering when we would sort of bring this back. Is that fair to say, or?
There is a time limit on it, for sure. And I'd have to go back, there's like six months from first reading or something? Oh, six months from the last public hearing of objections, so we've still got four, five months. So we'll have to go back to the developer and the development team to see what their thoughts are. We'll express the concerns and that.
Just have one more counselor. You didn't, you're okay with this?
Yes, I'm fine with it.
I don't want to leave anybody out, and I want to leave the guy in the last.
I just don't want to see that this goes dead in the water without a fair kick at the can, to use someone's expression here at this table. I really feel that the town has been divided, the council has been divided, and we've done all of this. I'd like to see a fair shake. Thank you.
You're welcome, Councilor Heenan.
Yeah, and again, it's going to be our interpretation of what you said, because nothing's on the record, so to speak, through motions and stuff. But I think you've been very clear on your concerns, and so we can go back with the general feel to see, you know, with the anticipation that as is, it could be a challenge of passing third reading. And so that if he wants to, Mr. Raca and company wants to relook at it and come up with an alternative plan that may or may not require going to first reading if it's a big change from the original, we can look at that at the time. But we'll get in touch with them tomorrow with some notes of what transpired with council tonight and get their feeling of what they'd like to proceed with and report back.
Thank you, Mr. Spear. Thank you, council. We certainly appreciate all your comments. I certainly appreciate the comment where we read everything and we discuss everything, and that is wonderful as a council. I have been on some councils, as the mayor has, where we've debated, but nothing has been as transparent as this council has been. And I'm very proud to be part of your council and to be part of this town. Thank you very much, and thank you, Your Mayor, for stepping down so I could do this.
Thank you, appreciate that. Seriously, I really do appreciate that, Deputy Mayor Akagi. There's nothing under new business, so that will lead us into question period. Has anything been submitted online or any hands? Mr. Knopper, I'll leave that now while you're looking that up, and I'll go to the floor. So the mic is, please come up to the mic and state your name and address if you have any questions.
Okay? No?
A brief, a brief statement is fine, but yeah.
Hi, Liz Kenyon, 18 Princess Royal. I have to take my glasses off to read. We come to St. Andrews as tourists, visitors, and residents. We choose to be here. We've seen pictures of colorful houses near the water, boats in the harbor, and visually given what we have anticipated when we drive into St. Andrews. Okay, so with that, sorry. This is a fulfilling feeling, a pleasant feeling, a great fulfilling, a grounded feeling of experiencing the history maintained here. There's warmth and kindness in these colors and shapes, in the people, it's welcoming and rich in its offerings. It's historical and has been designated so as by the plaque in the center of town and describes this distinction. We live in a unique town, an historical town that has successfully mandated and cared for this title, and has just recently passed a long-studied secondary plan to safeguard our unique town. This uniqueness has brought tourists and new residents here for many, many years. And just bridle path, we don't believe, belongs in this area just because of its height and scale and mass. And as elected representatives of your town, please open your hearts, your minds, and voices to your residents. Be brave. Over 103 family homes already have signed, and they were not coerced into anything they signed because they believed that it was too big in height and scale and mass. And let me think. I think that's it, except that the East Coast is fulfilled in my quest for finding a place that is unique, and St. Andrews is that uniqueness that you just don't get anywhere else in the world, and we'd love to have that maintained. So thank you for all your thoughtfulness and your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, was there anything that came in online?
Through, Your Worship, nothing that came in through email. If there's a question from anybody on Zoom, please. Uh, if there's a question from anybody on Zoom, please raise your hand now. Your virtual hand, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. We're gonna get into councilors and deputy mayor's comments, if there's anyone that would like to speak. Deputy Mayor Akagi?
And I made notes, too. First of all, I'd like to thank the firefighters for saving Indian Point, my house, the trees. Thank you, Counselor Neal, for being a volunteer. Most of them are volunteers, but they worked very quickly, um, and I'm very honored that you did that, but I know that it's your job, I know that you risk your life, and I just wanted to say a personal thank you. Thanks CHCO TV and Clerk Paul Knopper for assisting me to advertise a drum-making workshop. You wouldn't believe that that workshop filled up within a half an hour. At first, I only had 12 spots, and then, um, the murdered and missing indigenous women and girls of the province, um, I don't know her last name, I only know her as Pam, uh, came back to me and said, well, we can do 25. Well, with that 25, I reached out to CHCO TV and my friends, and within that half hour, it was filled. Um, I, I'm sorry, CHCO TV, that I gave you my wrong number. I was nervous, I don't know, I don't like to give out my cell number. Anyway, it was my mistake, not CHCO TV, it was mine. And, and for Mr. Knopper, who is going to assist me on that day, um, because we will, the town is providing the arena and the dining room, and, uh, probably coffee and tea and water, because we're not allowed to provide food yet. I also had people reach out to me, like Colin Alexander, who is in Indigenous New Brunswick, and he is, he is coming with somebody else as well. So those seats are filled, but we are going to offer a second workshop. I haven't talked to Pam yet, but we are going to offer a second workshop in February, we believe. And I am taking names, and my home phone number really is 529-3331, and it has a, an answering machine on it, or you can, um, leave me an email at the Town of St. Andrews, uh, my email is there, or akagi kate at gmail dot com. So, um, I've now, I think I said it correctly. Um, and I do, uh, we may do a rattle workshop as well, so if you're interested, you need to contact me and give me your name and the number of seats, because I have people that say, well, I want two or three seats. Well, that can be arranged if you call me, but right now, I am up to almost 15 names. So if you want a spot, you better get to me soon. All right. Farewell to Scrooge and Marley's. I hate to say that, because their shop will no longer be in business after November the 19th. It has been a part of St. Andrews for a while, and I, um, and I know the times are changing, and I look for, I'm looking for where Mark and Shelley will reinvent themselves. The fudge will still be available in that store, because there will be another business moving in there, but they have been a long-term, um, part of St. Andrews, and they're not moving, at least Mark and Shelley are not moving, out of St. Andrews, but their store will no longer be there. And as you know, it was a unique store to St. Andrews, to the area, and lots of people have traveled many, many, um, uh, times to come to St. Andrews just to go to that store, if not just to get fudge. And I know we have several other fudge makers, but I truly think their fudge is divine. Um, and the last thing I want to put a plug in for is for Dial-A-Ride, because I know it's the season that we need to think about those people who are hurting, like food banks and whatnot, but Dial-A-Ride to, uh, it's close to my heart, because I do a lot of Dial-A-Ride driving. But if you could see the number of medical appointments and the stats for what they do for the number of volunteers that they have, the mayor alluded to the volunteers that we have on council, it's wonderful. But Dial-A-Ride isn't, um, is in need of drivers, and even if you could just do one drive to take someone to a medical appointment, a dental appointment, or go to the hospital, you are doing a big thing to do that. Otherwise, they can't get to those appointments, or they can't be there, and they wind up suffering. So I'm looking to you to say, it's time to reach deep and say, if I can just do one drive, that's a big improvement. So, um, we really need drivers, and today I took, um, and I hope David and, and Margaret don't mind that I'm using their name, but Martins, who just moved to our community, and, uh, took them to an appointment, a medical appointment for him, and brought him back, and that's why I was almost late for council. But, um, it's really important when you see, um, the good that you do, and we do have a lot of people who volunteer, don't ask for anything, but, um, this is an important thing. So if you have just in your heart one drive, that would be awesome for the Dial-A-Ride, um, group. So thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to talk so long. I think I got all my points down.
Well, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Akagi. It's always good to draw some highlights, like you always do, I certainly appreciate it. Um, okay, any other member of council? Okay, I just want to make, uh, aware that November 28th is Election Day in Bayside and in Shamcook. Uh, it's important that everybody exercise their democratic right. In Shamcook, we have three candidates for two positions, and Bayside, two candidates for one position. So November 28th, please, uh, please, uh, vote, and I think CHCO will be doing a special on Meet the Candidates, and next week it'll be airing, so there we go, we're hearing it live. Um, so, yeah, it's just important to know, and the other thing is, just on that point, is residents of Bayside and Shamcook, um, you know, feel free to weigh in on town issues. In my mind, you are now residents of the Town of Sanders, it might be officially January 1st, but, um, it's close enough where, uh, I think we always value an opinion, because they're our neighbors, but, um, they certainly now, I, I would consider them residents. So I'll keep my comments very short, other than Counselor Blanchard, I believe, happy belated birthday. You almost pulled that one by, it was yesterday, was it? Yeah, turned 24? Yeah. And, uh, twice. And, uh, and their, council, your, your present for Counselor Blanchard's birthday is there's no closed session this evening, so I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn. I've got Deputy Mayor Akagi in second at by. Second at by, it's always Counselor Gomishel, isn't it? Counselor Gomishel, all, all in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye. That's everybody, we're adjourned.